At 6:08 PM, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Mark Nixon?
Here.
Jenny Koch?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Cal Sheehy?
Here.
David Lane?
Here.
Gordon Groot?
Here.
Donna McCoy?
Here.
Okay, item five, or excuse me, item four on our agenda is our initial and only Call to the Public. Call to the Public is where our citizens have an opportunity to bring to our attention any matter under the city's jurisdiction. Now, if there's an item that you want to talk about that is already agendized, I would suggest you wait for that item. Here, what we will do is listen intently, and the only thing we can do after that is ask staff to put it on a future agenda or to follow up with you at a later date. So with that, would anybody like to speak to council as part of Call to the Public? Seeing none, we're going to move on to our two public hearings tonight. Item 5.1, recommend approval of a special event liquor license application for the Lake Havasu City, excuse me, Lake Havasu Association Realtors fundraiser on February 25th, 2017, at 2119 McCulloch Boulevard. Is that? Oh, is Brian going to do it?
Hello, Evening Mayor, Council, Brian Allen. Brian Allen, the event coordinator for the city. As mayor stated, Thomas E. Larson is the applicant for the Lake Havasu Association of Realtors, and they have applied for a special event liquor license for One Beer Garden for a special event to be held at 2119 McCulloch Boulevard, which is the Springburg McAndrew Lot, on February 25th, 2017, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Proceeds from the event will go to the Lake Havasu Association of Realtors, and we've received all the fees, and there have been no objections submitted.
All right, thank you very much. All right, as it says, it is a public hearing. Would anybody like to address council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a special event liquor license for the Lake Havasu Association Realtors fundraiser on February 25th, 2017, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, at 2119 McCulloch Boulevard.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion. And second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, the second item on tonight's agenda is a discussion of possible action, if necessary, comply with Arizona Open Meeting Law, following the executive session regarding negotiations for the purchase of real property in conjunction with the Vision 2020 Downtown Project. Again, this is a public hearing, and so what I'm going to do, unless somebody over there wants to do it, but basically, we're talking about the Springburg McAndrew Lot, to give everybody some additional details, so that when, if you do want to discuss the matter as part of the public hearing. A memorandum of understanding was agreed to by the sellers to sell the piece of property at $1,005,000. That is for the both lots that are there. The city's intent currently is that if we decide to purchase that piece of property, we would not, as has been said in too many forums and whatnot, we would not be building buildings and renting them and doing all the rest of it. We would actually retain half of it as public space, roughly half, 40% to 50%, as public space or a plaza, if you will, and then we would market the other half with stipulations, so that a developer decides what to put there based on the stipulations that we would put on that property. For instance, what we would ideally, but we're going to look at it in way more detail, ideally, it would be shops, boutiques, restaurants, a pub, something in that nature. We were trying to avoid having office space, for instance, in that area, because we don't think that's necessarily conducive to our downtown areas. So that is the plan. The city is not going to be in the development real estate business whatsoever. And so that's the current discussion. It would be, if the council decides to move forward with this, this is not a, we would do the purchase right away, but in terms of future development, that will take time. We would want community input as to what they would like to see there. We would then put those stipulations together. It would be marketed by a commercial real estate person, and then from there, we would work in subdividing the remaining pieces of the property for future development. It wouldn't be until that time that the city would build additional infrastructure, because we don't want to create a plaza or anything else and then have the other half sit empty. So this isn't an overnight project. It would take time. The real issue tonight is whether or not we take control of that property, so that the community has a say in what goes there at a future date. So with that, I'm, unless council had some comments, I was going to open up the public hearing. Is there any? So let me open up the public hearing. Would anybody like to discuss this matter with the council? Seeing none, we'll close. Okay. Is that a yes or a no?
I would like to, I guess.
Okay.
My name's Steve Van El. I own the Red Onion, and I went to the owner's, the Springburg McAndrew family, a few years back, and asked them if I could plant grass and sprinklers and maintain it as a park for our downtown. And the whole purpose and the idea was to be able to bring events to the downtown and not have to close the street down for the smaller events, and we could still utilize the park and bring people and just kind of, you know, make it a gathering spot or a large green space or something, and they agreed to it. And it's worked out well. We've had about 25, maybe 30 events over the three and a half years, and right now, I have six events booked for the next couple of months. So if the purchase was made right away, I would need to know if these people would be able to still do their event or need to come to the city and get permitting for it. So.
Well, my understanding is that they would be able to do their event, but yes, they would come to the city, because it would be a city piece of property and get a permit for it.
Okay, good. Then that's something that I would tell anybody in the near future, if this goes through, that I don't do the booking anymore.
Yeah, it wouldn't look a whole lot different for a while, to be quite honest.
The water bill would be, though, right?
We were still going to send it to you, if that's all right.
All right, well, thanks, thanks. But anyway, it's been really, it's worked out really well. We've probably brought, I'd say, a good 10,000 people to the downtown over the last three or four years, just by the events that's been on the park. So, thank you.
You bet, thank you. Anyone else?
Gary Calog, 2790 Paseo Dorado, and longtime Havasu resident, mayor, city council. Mayor, as you remember, this is not a Johnny-come-lately project. It's been on the deck for at least nine years or 10 years that I can remember now. And I know it's always difficult, because you are charged with spending of the taxpayers' money and good projects, but we reflect back as a community. I remember when the Aquatic Center was brought online, and people, "Oh, my God, we can't spend the money, we can't do that." And within a month or two after it was open, it was another jewel in our crown, along with things like Rotary Park. So I think this will really begin to really make the downtown come alive, and it simply is one of those ideas whose time has come, and I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a couple of thoughts. Over the last several days, there's been a lot of discussion out in the community about this, and, you know, through the local newspaper and different forums, and I think it's important that we can educate folks on what that might be. From my perspective, this is an investment into our community and into our downtown. It'd allow the city the opportunity to go further and explore what the true opportunities are going to be. There seems to be a little bit of confusion, because the area is currently referred to as a park, that it's, that we are adding to our park system, which is not really the intention. It's the intention to find a very strategic opportunity to use a large public space in our downtown to create a gathering space. So I think it's really important to have that conversation. I've also heard that, why would we do this? Because we have another project or we have this. This is not in lieu of any other project. So everything else that's on our CIP currently, our capital improvement plan, is still moving forward. So we still have a very strong focus on parks and Cypress Park and Ball fields and all of those types of things. So all of those things are happening regardless. There are no tax increases that we're talking about, so for those folks saying that they would like, that it's going to increase our taxes, it's just not going to. So this is an opportunity we have to invest in our community. And the return on the investment, although we don't know what it's actually going to look like yet, is certainly going to drive additional property taxes for our community, as well as additional sales tax for our community. So I think those points are very important as a community, and we need to all stick together and look at what the opportunity in the future is. And if, after we do some of this work, it's determined that we don't have an opportunity there, we always can sell this investment or this piece of property and make sure that we're protecting the taxpayer dollars. So I think those are just important points to have out there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I just wanted to say that, excuse me, a year and a half ago, Frontier came along with the America's Best Community organization, or can't think of the word, the competition that they wanted to run, and we became a part of that. I've been working on this, we've been working on this, many people have been working on this for the last year and a half. What we did was, we held a meeting, so that the town individuals could come in and tell us what were the things that were important to them. And the number one thing was our town, our downtown. They wanted a downtown area, a town square, a something to develop our downtown area. There were other things, water, education, you know, jobs and so forth. But when we worked really hard to place this together and to win this competition, to work on this competition, and we've got down to the last eight, that's incredible of where this started, with hundreds of towns all across the United States, and we're in the top eight is amazing. And at our last town hall this weekend, we've laid out everything that we had come to know that was important to our city members. And the number one thing for that group of people was our, developing our downtown area. And for that, just like council member Sheehy, I think it's important that we have this opportunity, that we act on it. We don't have to do something immediately with it. It doesn't interfere with anything else we're working on, as far as our sports complex and what we want to do for other individuals in our city. But I think it's a great, it's a great, it just strikes me as this is going to be wonderful for our city and our downtown. This weekend, we're going to have, you know, 4,000 people on our main street.
Forty.
Excuse me, 40,000, not four, 40,000. And these are just little tents that people are going to put up. And so I just see this as something that can be absolutely wonderful, and I am all for it. And I think now's the time to do it. And if nothing else, you know, it's the worst-case scenario, is that then we sell it as a great piece of property.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a few questions, but the first question I have is, could you please tell the community how we would fund this?
Absolutely. It would be funded through the line of credit or debt that, or bond proceeds that we are going to be using for the same thing for the Cypress Park, Sarah Park, this is part of it, and several other projects were part of that as well.
Are we allowed to say the amount right now?
I did, I said $1,005,000.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. I understand that we had some town halls, and we had 200 some people, but there's over 50,000 people that live in Lake Havasu. I don't see what the rush is to purchase this at this time. I would like to see some more community conversations about this. I think it's a great idea, but I would hate to see a lot bought, and it sits there like some other areas, undeveloped. I'd like to have some secure developers that are secured in this area before we make this purchase.
Right, I guess I would ask, how do you do that if you don't own it? How do you get, asking somebody to develop the piece of property if it isn't yours? How do you ask somebody to develop somebody else's private property?
I understand what you're saying. I just, I believe if there's some people that wanted that area, if they would, if they came forward and discussed it, that that was an area they'd be interested in. I just would hate to see an empty parcel of property there. I just would see, think that we would have some kickback from our community on purchasing this at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In follow-up to council member Lynn's comment, it currently is vacant land that's sitting there. And for the contribution to Lake Havasu City is property taxes by taking it off the rolls of $761.01 a year that is going to have that impact. But the future opportunity that we'll have, once the property is developed, will increase sales tax revenues and the property tax value. And in addition to that, we will have the opportunity, if one of those developers come along during this process, what we're doing here today is controlling the property. So if someone were to come to us and say, "Hey, I have this great idea, and I want to do this," then we certainly can sell it, because we're not in any way looking to be in the landlord business or the developer business. So if someone came to us and said that, I would, my vote would be to sell it off them. So I don't think that precludes that from happening by us securing the property to control.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to go along with what council member Sheehy and McCoy have said. I've been involved with the Downtown Association over the years, helped put on events that brought 40,000 people to McCulloch Boulevard. I've been involved with the Partnership for Economic Development for years. This isn't a new concept, this is an opportunity. If we don't take advantage of it now, when will we? So I look at it as an investment either way in the property. Hopefully, down the road, it comes to fruition to what the Vision 2020 program has brought it to be, but if not, it's still a parcel of land that's worth money at the end of the day, so.
Yeah, I guess my only comment would be, and everybody has mentioned it a little bit earlier, we can either control our future or let our future control us. That's really what this decision is all about. So do I, is there any motion from the council? Yes.
I move that we proceed.
One sec, Donna.
Yes, please.
I move to authorize the purchase of the properties located at 2117 and 2119 McCulloch Boulevard for $1.05 million plus cost, and authorize city staff to execute all necessary documents to complete the purchase transaction. Second.
All right, we have a motion. And second, is there any further discussion?
Just one last point. Again, I think it's really important that the conversation in the community is that this is an investment in Lake Havasu City. And if at any point we decide that it's not what we need, we can sell this investment for profit, as you would any other investment. So I think the conversation out there really needs to be focused on the investment.
And I would agree, and also, the conversation, assuming that we agree to purchase it, the conversation then needs to be, what is the community looking for in terms of what would be developed at that piece of property? Because then we can respond to that. So, Mr. Lane?
Mr. Mayor, just for the public, right now, Mr. Van El has been taking pretty good care of this property. We buy that property, he'll no longer be doing it. The city manager, can you explain to us how we're going to take care of the property, should we buy it?
Well, we do have, obviously, we'll, you know, we'll keep it up. We're not going to let it die. But as far as, during the planning process, we'll pretty much keep it the way it is. We do have a process for events that includes public properties. I wouldn't consider it a park property, but certainly, our parks maintenance people would likely be the ones charged with, you know, keeping it green. But it will just be a city parcel, and we do have a process where people who want to have an event on city parcels can come in and work with Brian to get that done. So we don't expect to, for the public, to see really any change down there until such time, as we do have a master plan, and we're ready to move forward and ready to put a shovel in the ground there.
So there won't be any other issues going on with this, other than we're buying the property, so we have it, should we need it in the future, and if we don't want it, we can sell it. Property right now, obviously, is not going down. I don't foresee that in the near future. So we're not going to lose money in this deal, and we have the money in the CIP fund to pay for it through the bonds.
Yes, we have the funding available. It is protected from expenditure limitation. In the method that the money was borrowed to fund a laundry list of items, and this purchase falls within the parameters of that laundry list. So we're confident that the purchase is, you know, fully secured with respect to the expenditure limitation issue. It would not be our intention to make the property any more than it is right now until such time as we have a secure plan to move forward. So I wouldn't expect us to make any improvements out there, you know, for the short term, until we do have a long-term plan. So this is basically just about securing the property to buy us the time to go through that planning process and reach out and get the community's input on what they truly want to see there. We have a concept plan that's been included in the Vision 2020 plan, it's been published, it was on the front page of the newspaper, and that's just, that's a concept. That's what it could potentially be. But until we, until we go to the next step, which would be, well, the next step would be to gain control of the property, so that would buy us the time to go to the next step, which would be to seek out those with expertise to help us determine exactly how we can maximize that property, still secure a public space, a public square, and how best to master plan the commercial aspect of that property.
And if we don't purchase it now, we either will lose it or pay a higher price for it in the future.
It's back on the market.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. I'd like to say that I think this is a fabulous, fabulous piece of property, a great plan, but I see a lot of blue sky here, a little bit thin on the actual facts and the development. And my concern is that if I, as an individual investor, could not make this decision, and it could not be proven that we, as a municipality, are in fact the developer of a last resort, then I would have to say that the fiduciary responsibility entrusted to me by the taxpayers is that I would have to view this as not a suitable investment at this time. I just, it's not my money, it's the taxpayer's money. I couldn't do it myself, how could I do it for the taxpayer at this time? But I do love the plan, and I support this concept.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd have to agree with Mr. Groot.
Yeah, I don't disagree, it is taxpayer money, and that's why it's being invested and not spent. This is land. Land is what our houses are on, that we're able to resell and recoup. This is not, it goes into operations and gets spent on supplies and salaries and whatever. This is an investment that will sit on the books as an asset. And ideally, if we are later able to put together a plan, which I am confident we will over time, then we would be selling off a good piece of that and reducing our initial investment. Yes, there would be some infrastructure costs related to a plaza or whatever we come up with, but we wouldn't spend that money until we were confident that we had a developer for the remaining portion of the property, that then would create additional property tax and additional sales tax that further reduces our investment. So while I don't disagree, it's taxpayer money, I believe it's also our responsibility to invest it wisely, not just spend it, and I think this is a wise investment to control our future. I really don't, you know, we've looked at trying to develop downtown for years and years and years, changed the zoning, did all kinds of different things, and as many communities have done, they finally have said, you know what, prodding and pushing hasn't got us where we are, so let's, let's make an investment and show everybody what can really be done as a catalyst for the remaining portion of our downtown. And that's the way I see this project. With any luck, we'll win the ABC contest, which brings with it $3-plus million that we wouldn't have otherwise had, and this was part of that Vision 2020 plan. And so there's some additional dollars that could be utilized to reduce the taxpayer investment.
Mr. Mayor, the Vision 2020, the best community money, is that city money or is that CVB money that's the winnings?
It goes to the, it goes to the ABC team or city, and it would, that's why they have cities behind it, and that money would be utilized in accordance with what we tell them how it would be spent.
I thought that it was a CVB.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, council member Lynn, there's an organization called America's Best Community, and it's its own separate 501(c)(3) that is managing that. And there's a board, and there's an engaged team of 40 members of our community that are driving that force. And based on the outcome of the town hall this past weekend, that's how those dollars will be allocated.
They would be okay with, they would be okay with spending that money on that property?
Yeah, that's where the dollars are going to be allocated, based on the town hall.
Why are we not, can I just ask? I just have a problem with it being such a hurry. I don't, I don't have a problem with the plan. I think that if it works, I, it'd be great. I have concerns that we are going to sit with an empty property there. I have those concerns. I'm just wondering, why are we not waiting? What if they, when they use that money there to purchase it, and we don't use the city money to purchase it?
Well, from my perspective, time is of the essence, because now the current owners of the property know that somebody's interested in it. And the further we go in saying what we can do, obviously, that drives up price or demand, and when demand is driven, price is driven, from my perspective. Also, to comment on, council member Groot, I don't believe that we're saying that we're the developer of last choice or last resort. As you indicated, we're looking at making an investment to control a piece of property. And I think it's also important to note that this isn't the only piece of property the city owns. We own a lot of vacant land throughout Lake Havasu City that's an investment for our future, whether it be future fire stations or future other municipal uses that we need to have that are undeveloped. So I don't know if that would, would drive a decision for me necessarily.
Mr. Mayor, you've seen me going back and forth, you know, trying to get all the facts on this.
Of course.
And my bottom line, when I'm studying this issue, is basically, we're looking at just buying a piece of land. I understand that there's concept drawings and things that we want to maybe do downtown. Because of this Vision 2020 program that we have going, there's a good Because of this Vision 2020 program that we have going, there's a good possibility that the prices are going to go up. This is a prime piece of property in the downtown area, and all we're doing at this point is buying the piece of land and not spending money on anything else, and it's not going to take away from the Cypress Park issue or the Sarah Park issue or any of those projects that we already have going on. So we have the money there to make an investment for the people of Lake Havasu, and in the long run, it will save them money. And if we end up developing in the way the plan is down the road someday, we would end up selling half the land back and making at least half the money back, or if property values go up, making all the money back. So it's actually an investment in today's property. All right, thank you.
Any final comments before we vote? All right, I think we're ready to vote. This is motion to adjourn now. All right, thank you very much. All right, let's see, your last item, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, unless there's an objection, we are adjourned.